Okay, welcome everybody to our special work session meeting of the town council. We have one agenda item that we're going to be discussing, which is our debt service overview. We had this discussion in early, mid-October or September, and we have some new information to share. I would first like to welcome Superintendent Reese. Thank you for coming. This is your first week or so. It's nice to see you here.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks for coming by. So I'll call the meeting to order. Michael, do you want to give an overview, or shall we just jump right in and have Rob take over?
Sure.
If there's questions after Rob is done, we can certainly pose them.
Thank you. I think you covered it. It was, you know, the meeting on the 26th that we had presented information. In light of that, since that meeting, Rob had looked at and checked the formula, and there was an error. And we're here to speak to that and talk about the impact. And Rob has got plenty of documents here, and we'll walk you through each and every piece of that. And there are, you know, some moving parts there that we want to make sure we understand the impact.
All right. Before we begin, should we have some other documents for some folks that are here tonight? Or can we make some extra copies of what we're looking at?
Absolutely.
There aren't too many audience members, so...
You want to help Cindy?
Thanks Cindy. One of our council people will be here a little bit later, but we are, I told him we were going to get started on time so that we can spend whatever time we need to go through these numbers that Rob is going to talk to us about. I'll just wait another minute till we get some more sheets for you. You don't have them, I'm assuming? No? Okay. All right. We'll give them to you. All right. Well, I'm going to just ask Rob to start talking while we're waiting. I mean, you don't have to get into the nitty-gritty, but just kind of tell us where we were and sort of the, I think some of the things that would be helpful for us as well as the general public is why this account is so important for us to pay attention to, what we use this account for, what the monies are designated for, and how it changes over time. So if you could just give us like an overview of our debt service fund, and then once Cindy brings in the numbers, we can specifically talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. First of all, the only reason we're really here discussing this is because I made an error in the calculation that was presented on the 26th of September. I don't usually make errors like that, so I do humbly apologize, but what he feels worse than I do about having this error and having to have this meeting and an additional night out for you folks. But the, you know, if there is any, it was an error in estimating going forward what the cost of bonding would be over the next 20, 25 years. And I had, you know, once I was speaking in that meeting, as I was speaking, I kind of realized that there was an error and this couldn't be correct, and immediately went back and looked at it and, you know, confirmed with our financial advisor that there was definitely something wrong with my calculation, found the error, and now these numbers that will be presented tonight, while still estimates and, you know, because we haven't done anything, you know, they're still estimates, but they're, at least the calculations are correct based on the information we currently have. The debt service fund is important to answer your question because it's, you know, we can't pay for cash for everything. We can't budget everything for everything we do year to year. We would like to, we have been level funding this debt line item in the general fund budget for about seven, eight, five, six, seven years, something like that. And within that time, our debt payments have been lower than the budgeted line item amount that we've been budgeting.
And how much was that? It's 430,000?
Four million, four hundred and thirty, four million, four hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars was the budgeted line item. This current year, we gave you 500,000 back and lowered it to 3 million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Now, when I say that we budget 4.4 million and our payments are less than 4.4 million, that difference should have been, as designed, going into the debt management fund to be used when our debt payments exceed 4.4 million dollars. In other words, we do not have to increase the general fund budget to pay for the increased bonding costs or debt payments that we have to pay for whatever projects we use or use, you know, bond for. You know, we're specifically talking about a middle school project at this point in time at 26 million dollars, but obviously that's not the only project we will have to bond over the next several years. We haven't bonded in two years now, you know, and then there are some capital issues and projects that we probably need to bond for again because we don't have the cash to pay for them upfront, nor should we, because the projects last longer than, you know, a few years. We, over these years that we've been level funding, we've been using the surplus instead of putting it away in debt management. We've been using it for other items, primarily to fund our CIP projects that are not bonded. In other words, the cash that pays for these projects. So we've been using this revenue source one time, if you will, as we called, we said it would be a one-time revenue source. We've used it multiple years unfortunately. So the fund balance in this fund, as of June 30th, '23, is just under 802,000 dollars. However, in this current fiscal year, we again used 500,000 of it. So at the end of this fiscal year, without any surplus going back into the fund, we'll have a fund balance of three, just under 302,000 dollars. But as we did in '23, I'm suggesting that we do not use the surplus we'll have in '24, and we'll be, you know, pretty much at the same level, be about 152,000 dollars at the end of '24. Now, where the error occurred in my calculation on September 26th was, you know, we're looking at potentially bonding. At that time, we're talking about 36 million dollars over, you know, a couple, a few years. And the scenario we're looking at tonight is still bonding that same 36 million dollars. We're just tweaking it a little bit to accommodate, you know, where we can go and again, have as little impact to taxpayers as possible. You know, so what we were offering, or what we're saying, you know, I guess projecting will be the numbers you have in front of you. All the numbers you have in yellow or highlighted, or gray or yellow, whichever version of the spreadsheet you have on the first page are known numbers at this point in time. Okay? So again, if you look at the very top line, we'll have an 802,000 dollar fund balance at the end of '23, but we used 500,000. Our debt payments this year are just under 3.4 million. We budgeted 3.9 million. We should have a surplus of 550,000 dollars plus or minus, leaving us a fund balance in a debt management fund of 852,000 at the end of June 24. Our debt payments for '25, next year, are going to be about 2.7 million. We have a big decrease. Okay? We're going, we said in the meeting previously, we said in previous budget sessions that we're going to come back to you and ask for that 500,000 dollars back, that we lowered this year's fiscal year '24's budget, debt line item, to 3.9 million. We're going to ask for it back.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes, you can.
Does it have to go back in one fiscal year? Can we put it in for two subsequent, you know, one year and then the following year to get that 500,000 back off?
I would suggest we do it in one year because it makes the numbers work a little easier, number one, and number two, there are revenue increases this year that we should have at the end of the year that could very well make up for the 500,000 dollars that we're going to increase in 20, that we're asking you to increase in '25.
Got it.
So for example, we just received notification, I talked to you today, that we received a grant from the state of Connecticut today for 443,000 dollars that we did not budget because the state doesn't know what the amount's going to be during budget processing time. This has to do with the municipal revenue sharing account, which is a sales tax that every town gets a piece of. We can't budget for it because there's no known amount. We don't know what it is. We may not get anything, depending on where the state is in their fiscal year. But we got 443,000. All things being equal, that 443,000 we received this year will fall to the bottom line, general fund, fund balance, to help offset the 500,000 dollar increase, all things being equal, next year. So it's, you know, not to mention the grant list will probably go up and eat up to, you know, 500,000 by itself anyway. That's the hope anyway.
So the 500, we do have to take care of that.
Next, next, next year.
However, impact, bottom line impact may not be noticeable.
To the taxpayer will not be noticeable, at least with regards to debt. Okay?
Okay.
I really do...
I have to stress that.
Stress that enough that, you know, budgeting at 4.4 million as designed was meant to cover these ups and downs when we bond or when we have to bond for larger projects, okay? We didn't follow the design of that concept. We use the monies for other things. It is very important that we keep, we follow the design, okay, and not use this money as a one-time revenue for other things to pay cash for. And that's what we essentially use this debt management fund for, to pay cash for other projects.
And so it wasn't just the 500,000 we used to supplement revenue. There were other things that those dollars were used for outside of that amount.
Right. Primarily, again, primarily CIP.
CIP, yeah.
You know, I don't have off the top of my head a list of amounts, but we, over the years since '16 or '17, we probably used, you know, excess of, you know, 3 million dollars, six years, that were on 500,000 each, you know, 3 million dollars in projects that we funded essentially with this cash savings. But again, we're going to request a 500,000 in '25 budget process again because I think we can more than make it up with additional revenues that have come in both this year and the potential grant list increase for next year.
Okay.
In '25, the grant list will be finalized by January 31st, so we should have some information, you know, early February as to where the grant list for the next fiscal year will be. But, so again, conceptually, just looking at our spreadsheet, and there's three pages of what I believe we gave you. The first one is my spreadsheet that we saw in the meeting on the 26th of September. Again, the yellow numbers are the known quantities at this point in time. Everything else are estimates because we haven't done anything. Okay? We were suggesting that we would bond 10 million dollars in this fiscal year, I'm sorry, next fiscal year in '25, just for projects outside of the middle school project. Don't know what they may be. We know we need some work at roadways. We have road bonds, things like that. Just normal timing of our project schedules. We don't have to bond the 10 million. Just saves us more money if we don't. But those projects that we're anticipating are still going to come due at some point in time. So what we've done, and again, these numbers are all confirmed with our financial advisor from Phoenix. You know, we've kind of looked at a couple different scenarios, and this one being the best. You know, we normally bond over 20 years. Most of these projects, the life expectancy is 20 or more years. So it's a, you know, good number to pick, 20 years. We don't have to. We can bond more than 20 years. Okay? In this 10 million dollar offering, we're suggesting within fiscal year '25, we're setting up a scenario where bond it late in the fiscal year, pushing the first principal payment off until fiscal year '26, only budgeting for a interest-only payment in 2025 at an interest rate of 5% instead of the 7% we had in the meeting on the 26th. Market's changing a little bit. 5% seems to be a little more palatable number these days going forward. Again, these are estimates. We don't know. We don't have a crystal ball. If we bond in, say, March of, or February of '25, we don't know what the interest rates are going to be then. These are estimates at this point in time. We're also estimating that due to the market, we will have a premium. Okay? We're suggesting to put that premium, instead of into the project, which we've always done, put it into this debt management fund. Again, building up the fund for when we need additional debt payments and not, to not increase the general fund budget. We're estimating 400,000 on a 10 million dollar offering.
Can you explain that a little bit more to the premium concept? I'm not familiar.
Premium, it's, and Mike can explain it probably clearer than I can, but essentially, it's the interest rate that we pay versus what the interest rate the investor pays. Because municipal bonds are, you know, still a hot commodity. I mean, we're not going out of business. You know, investors are buying in the town. The town's not going out of business. They're willing to pay a premium for what they offer us. That premium, again, estimated at 400,000 versus having a, you know, let's see, a negative premium. There's no, I mean, with the interest rates the way they are right now, there's no way there'd be a negative premium.
Supposed to be a discount?
A dis, I'm sorry, discount. Thank you. There you go, Mike. See, I know you knew more than I did. But again, putting that money into the debt management fund is a difference for us because we've always put it into the project, which essentially lowers the cost of the projects. This will lower the cost of our debt going forward. That's all. It's one half dozen or the other, but it makes, it makes our fund balance in the debt management fund look better after a year, if you will. Okay? So again, having said we'll push off the principal payment to '26, we'd only have an interest payment. We'd have a premium larger than our interest, I'm sorry, larger than our interest payment. We'd still put money back into the fund balance, and at the end of '25, we'd have a very healthy fund balance in a debt management fund going forward to when or if we bond for any, you know, again, 13 million dollars in 2026. We'd have our first principal payment on the 10 million dollar bond. We'd have our interest payments, and we'd do the same thing on a 13 million. We'd push it off till late in the fiscal year, only having an interest payment on the new 13 million dollar bond in 2026. Again, getting, assuming a premium of 500,000 on 13 million. Okay? We'd still be able to, by having those two new bond offerings on the books in 2026, we'd still have a surplus in the fund for the fiscal year, putting money back into the debt management fund. This is important in future years. Now, if we play it out to 2027, when we bond the second half of this 13 million dollars, again, these are the same numbers we used before, so I haven't changed the amounts of what we assumed we would budget, uh, bond. Again, same concept. I should backtrack. Difference in the 13 million dollar bond offering. I said we bond things for 20 years. We don't have to. We have up, by state statute, we have up to 30 years to bond issue, school projects especially. We're targeting to do this 13 million dollar offering over 22 years. And again, if we're targeting this 13 million dollars to be a middle school, for the middle school project or a school project, just because the state says we have to run it, we could renovate like a building like new after 20 years, does not mean we have to do it after 20 years if we have a proper maintenance program throughout that 20-year period of time. Meaning, we can push the bonds off more than 20 years to lower, you know, the impact to our budget going forward. Now, yes, it's two more years. Yes, there'd be two more interest payments. Yes. But we also will get more than 22 years out of that project, more than likely. So there will be savings subsequent to year '22 on that individual bond offering, if you can follow that mentality. The second offering in 2027 will come on the books, again, 13 million dollars. Again, late in the fiscal year, not budgeting a principal payment, only budgeting an interest payment, and again, getting a premium on that 13 million dollars. Now, if you can follow the numbers, you would see that our debt for that fiscal year in '27 will be 4.5, just over 4.5 million when we're budgeting 4.4. Okay? We would use about 124,000 plus or minus out of the debt management fund instead of increasing the debt budget line item in the general fund. This is why having a fund balance in a debt management fund is important, because we would not have to increase the general fund budget, at least for debt. For that year, we would be able to use the reserves we have built up already from the previous years in the debt management fund to cover the excess principal and interest costs. Going forward again to '28, we would have, you know, again, we would use the 13 million dollars over 22 years. We would push that, we would push that one off a year too, a principal payment. We'd actually push that principal payment off two years. So the first 13 million dollar bond offering, we'd push off one year. The second 13 million, we'd push off two years. We would have a half year of interest in year one, a full year of interest in year two, and then year three, the principal and interest at full would come on board. Again, this gives us a little time and flexibility to build up the debt management fund to cover these increases. Again, my schedule is only going out to fiscal year '29, but at the bottom, you can see in '29, if these numbers are, again, they're estimates, they're not, we don't know for sure. But if we budget 4.3 million in fiscal year '29, and these estimates are close, we'd spend about 5.3 million. You know, that's an 840,000 dollar hit. Okay? But we'd have sufficient reserves in our debt management fund to cover it, therefore we do not have to increase the fund balance. My schedule only goes out to 2029 because we only talked about five years. The next two pages though, on the printouts we've given you, which come from our financial advisor, go out for the full life of the bonds, the 22 years, 20, 20 years, 22 years, showing every debt offering we currently have on the books as well. And you'll see that versus a 4.4 million dollar budget, years '27 through 2031, our bonding costs are greater than our budget, yet we would not have to increase our debt budget to accommodate that increase. We'd be able to use the debt management fund that's built up over the time period previous to these five years. Subsequent to that in 2032, again, assuming no other bonding takes place, which is not reality, and I'm sure there will be other bonding, other projects above and beyond this, but we would, we, our debt budget again, maintaining a 4.4 million, our debt cost would be below that. So we really have a five-year window here where our debt payments, assuming this scenario, these scenarios, where our debt payments would be higher than our debt budget. But again, using the debt management fund balance that's built up prior to that, we'd be able to absorb it with no increase to the general fund at 4.4 million. Leave it, leave it alone. Leave it the same in perfect, you know, going forward, don't change it at all, is what essentially this scenario shows. You know, we, again, it would be sticking to the plan as designed several years ago that we didn't stick to. That's the bottom line. Again, the increase to 500,000 for the general budget that we're going to be asking for in the '25 budget is pretty much already made up for with the revenue we received today. So the impact really, even to that, is zero.
Yeah.
But again, you know, it, you know, we, you know, we got lucky over the years, the last few years, with the way interest rates were with our debt. You know, we refinanced millions, tens of millions of dollars at lower rates, saving big taxpayer dollars. You know, the money that we should have saved should have already been in this fund, based on that. It's just not there because we used it for other things, which at the time seemed like a good idea. And it certainly isn't a bad idea. It's just now, you know, with interest rates going back up, the cost of building, the cost of doing everything going way up, you know, our debt payments are going to go up when we do bond. And interest rates are not that high. I mean, they certainly have been higher over, you know, years and years ago, you know. And again, when these, you know, we are very active in the market, looking at markets when we can refinance if necessary. All of our debt right now is really low. We can't refinance. Interest rates are higher. But again, when we budget, when we, when or if we bond these items, whatever interest rate comes in, after a seven, eight-year period, the coupon period, we certainly will look and see where the market is again, and maybe we can refinance and save some more money. That's just what, how the game is played and how we roll. Again, we, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what the market's going to do when we go out. Everything is timing on this. Okay? We can go out today, get one interest rate, we can go out two months from now, get a different interest rate. We just don't have that crystal ball. You know, our financial advisors are on top of things, but again, they don't have a crystal ball either. I mean, you know, a lot going on in the world could change things. You know, timing is everything. However, I think the one thing I want to, you know, stress more than anything is that if we're looking at, in this case, the middle school project specifically, at a current level of 26 million dollars, our debt budget can certainly handle it with minimal, if any, impact to the taxpayer. You know, we, we've got lucky over the years in using ARPA monies and ESAR monies, again, one-time revenues, and we've said over the many, many budget years that these one-time revenues are going to come to an end. Well, I think this discussion on the debt service fund is shutting off the revenue from the debt service fund. That's one. And ARPA, we know is coming to an end too, and so is ESAR. So it's really, the impact to the taxpayer will be on what you, as the council, decide to budget for CIP, both on the expenditure and how we fund that expenditure cost.
Could I ask a quick question? This document calculates that we stop using debt management funds for CIP.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So that's why you would see you would have a fund, so the return, if you will, to fund balance at the end is the difference between, well, we budget 4.4 and whatever the debt payments in total are for the year.
Yep, okay.
And then we can absorb when the debt payments are greater than our debt budget.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I was married.
Okay, just, and it's also predicated on that we would go back to the 4 million, 430, 000.
Right. We're going to come to you...
Stick to it.
Yeah, we're going to come to you in '20, in the next budget cycle, and ask for it back, as we said we would when we gave it to you last year. But I, I think it's just the right thing to do, given the dollars that we're talking about interest-wise and the cost of construction. That 500,000 is, you know, pennies on the dollar in the whole scheme of things that theoretically we've already made up with the revenue we've, we received today.
Right.
So the impact is really minimal.
But going back to the, to the 4 million, 430,000 budget, which we did take out of last year, certainly, would give us a comfortable cushion funding our debt.
I believe this analysis shows that it will, yes, and even going out, you know, again, 20, 25 years.
Right, I saw that, yeah.
You know, again, these are not only the three bond offerings we're going to do in that period of time. Obviously, there's going to be other things we're going to do for one reason or the other, but we will have a cushion to absorb any additional bonding cost that may go above the 4.4 million dollar line item.
And like you said, we may be able to do refinancing, but none of that is taken into account. This is if interest rates stayed about 5%.
No, again, because we don't know what the market's going to show when we physically go out to bond.
So this is based on the 5% then?
It's based on 5% right now. Our financial advisor indicated that rates are hovering for four and a quarter, four and a half, depending on the town, your rating. Our rating is very good, as we know. That will not change. You know, one of the things that caused our rating to go up was this level funding line item concept. That was a huge, huge win in the bonding world. If you can keep your debt level funded, your debt budget level funded, I should say, that just means you're planning for the future. You're planning to do things that you need to do when you need to do them. They, they just love that concept. We just haven't really followed the concept 100%. We don't tell them that, but we don't have to tell them that either. So, because our, you know, our budgets have, have been very, very good over the years. They've seen proof of what we're doing is working, so.
Thank you. So Rob, the debt management fund was also used not only for capital, our CIP budget. Did we use it for other things, other than, well, the 500,000, we've already talked about that for this current year. What else would we have used that, that management fund for?
Over the years, we've used it for a couple of other items, bigger items that we didn't do additional appropriations for, for example, police overtime, other budgeted line items within the general fund budget, that, you know, we have the money sitting in the budget already. Why appropriate it? Just use a little bit, little bit of it. But 98, 98, 99% of the monies have been used for CIP only.
CIP?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And also, when I sat with you a couple of, whenever, a few, a week and a half ago or so, we talked about the middle school project and the cost of it. If it goes, goes forward and we do assume 26 million dollars worth of debt for that 61 million dollar project, what's actually the total cost of that, once you calculate it out for the 20 years?
Over the period of time, again, assuming, assuming the million dollars on the two separate 13 million dollar bond offerings, it'd be just over 40 million dollars.
40 million?
Over 20, 22 years and change.
That's 22 years?
Yeah, because again, the second two, the second, the second, the, both 13 million dollar offerings, which is suggesting to bond over 22 years versus 20.
Okay.
Rob, you did suggest 30 years. What would it come out to be?
Well, I, I don't know that I would go that far. I think there comes a, a break-even point, if you will, that, you know, the, the interest cost on 30 years versus 22 years just may not be enough. We could certainly run the figures, but I don't know that that would, you know, I think, I mean, you're paying for the same, you know, it's almost like leasing a police car, if you will. And the car's useful life is going to be five years. Why continue, why lease a car for five or six years to lower the cost in those five[1771.83] or six years and not have the vehicle then for the next two years, you know, while the lease is still going on? Because those are continually, they're continually being replaced.
You did say 5%, correct?
5% right now, yeah. So this, at this point, if we were to go out today, 5% would probably be a little high, but we don't know when we go out.
What was the lowest that you've paid in interest?
Ooh. Uh, I believe our lowest was .9.
.9.
1.1, 1.15 sticks in my mind for one, .9.
I thought we squeezed in a less than 1% in there.
It was .9, yeah, .9. We, we had bands that were like .25. You know, we, we banned, did a ban for the road projects versus bonding, we did year one ban, year two ban, year three ban, we were at .25, .33, and then we bonded at, you know, 1.12.
That was the initial percentage?
Yes. The true interest, the true interest cost, yes.
Something that was at a higher rate and you refinanced?
Oh, refinanced, oh, oh, yeah, I mean, we've had, yeah, when the rates went down to those historically low levels, we had bonds on the books who were at 7, 8, 9% that were bonded in 2012, 2011, that were refinanced to that lower rate of, you know, whatever we got at the time of refinancing. Now, again, only certain coupons of those maturities were able to be refinanced, we couldn't refinance all of them, but the majority of them were refinanced at substantially lower rates.
And the majority of the bonds and the debt that we have, for the most part, has, in the past and going forward, have been for school building projects, correct? I know that we have, we borrow, we borrow for our water pollution control, but that's a separate altogether.
That's separate, yeah.
Fund, separate, handled completely differently. But for the most part, is that the case?
I, I would say that a higher percentage is for school, we break it down into three components, general government, Board of Education, and in our case, sewer. And the, the biggest component is, at this point in time, Board of Education. Sewer's getting up there, but again, it's a separate fund, like you said, so it doesn't come into this equation.
Right.
At all. But the sewer, sewer projects are also pretty large.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Rob, I wasn't on the council at the time, but what was the bonding for Linden Street and also Wheeler? What did we go out for on that?
Oh, boy, you wouldn't have to ask me that right now. I didn't bring my financial statement. Linden, I believe, was around 20, 21 million, maybe?
Our, our share, or?
What?
Our share, or was it the total share, including the grant?
No, I know, it, no, I believe, no, you know what, that, that was, that was total. That wasn't our share, no. So I'll, I'll get back to you, I'll send you an email tomorrow on that. I don't want to make another error and give you incorrect numbers. No, I'll, I'll look into that, I'll, I'll give you both gross cost and what we physically bonded for the projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rob?
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just regarding how we bond, and I had someone ask me a question over the weekend, and I thought, it used to be we would bond the entire amount of a project and the state would, specifically with school projects, and the state would reimburse us on a yearly basis. And if I'm wrong, you could stop me now, but, and I thought it changed at some point, and I couldn't remember exactly what the change was, is how they fund.
We, we go to, well, we go to referendum for the full gross amount.
Correct.
So I'll pick easy numbers, just to make it easy, you know, we're, we're going to bond, you know, the project's $10 million, our reimbursement rate is 65%, we're going to go out to referendum for $10 million.
Correct.
Knowing that theoretically, we will get 65% or 6.5 million back, we would only have to bond when necessary. Remember, we're getting grant payments back if we, if we apply for them, you know, as the project goes on, we would only have to bond for 3.5 million. Again, there's, you know, ineligible costs, you know, there's overruns, there's underruns, but the general scheme of things that we would bond for, over time.
Yep, yep.
Our share that is not reimbursed by the state.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm making sure.
So if I can follow through on that, because that's a good question, how does the other part of that get paid for as the contractors start sending in their invoices? And who paid, do they send it directly to the state for payment? They certainly, they're not going to wait for, for us to get our reimbursement to get paid, correct? So how does that work?
Correct. We essentially pay, we pay the, well, we don't essentially, we do, we pay the contract. So we, you know, we have cash in our bank accounts, we pay them, the monies, and we then submit reimbursement requests to the state. Depending on, you know, how fast or quickly the reimbursement comes back in, we just replenish our bank account. And again, that's where, you know, that's where we've come to you and said we might need to ban, because we don't have enough cash if we have a lot of projects going on. I recall when I first came here in 2008, we had, I think it was Linden Street and the sewer, a sewer project going on at the time, they were both, you know, large cash flow wise, and we needed money in the bank to pay the contractors, you know, they were both two big projects at the time. We didn't have enough cash flow available to us at the time, we had a ban to get money in the bank account to pay some of these contractors before the reimbursement started coming back in. And then the reimbursements came back in, we paid off the ban, it was all good. So it's all, it's all really timing, but, you know, for the most part, we pay, get reimbursed.
So as the project goes along, the contractors submit the invoice to the town, the town pays it out of our fund, then we send in a request for reimbursement to the state?
Correct.
And, okay, so that, does that happen fairly smoothly? Because I know we're still waiting for money from Wheeler School.
Yeah.
So as these big projects keep, as you start going through a $60 million project.
Yeah, the last payment usually is the longest delayed reimbursement, simply because the state has to audit the project. And that's where the ineligible's come into play, and, you know, you know, we submit a reimbursement request for a million bucks, they make, they only pay a certain percentage of that because they hold back for some, some of the ineligible's. You know, so we, if we stay on top of it, you know, the initial reimbursements are paid timely. They only pay up to a certain percentage as well, until the project is complete, audited, and they'll give you the addition, I think it's 90% right now. So they pay up to 90% and then everything stops. We can't even request above and beyond that until the project is complete. Once the project's complete, we can submit, you know, the request for the additional monies, they then conduct the audit, they reimburse us, that's where the holdup is right now with the state on the Wheeler project, is essentially getting the audit scheduled and ready to go and see what comes back to us. We then would have to bond if, if necessary, any hole that we have, that we currently haven't bonded yet for.
So Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary.
So they have stated to you, Rob, that that is the reason why, because of the audit process?
It's just the whole issue with.
Red tape.
The, what is the, you know, the educational, you know, state. You know, we've, we've been a few years, but unfortunately, I do know other towns that have waited substantially longer, but I'm, in fact, I'm hoping to do it this week, is get in contact with the state and see where, what we need to do, how we need to do it, where we need to go. How can we expedite this process and, and get the ball rolling so that we can get some of these funds back into our bank?
Get some information if the audit process is going to be completed.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't even know, I mean, it used to be the state used to, you know, do the audit, then they said, no, go hire, hire your own auditors, do what you want to do. I, I don't even, you know, there's been so many changes right now, I don't, I'm unsure where, that's why I do have to get in touch with somebody and, and see what's going on.
All right.
Hoping to do that this week.
Now, would you expect that to be all in one payment, one final payment, or will it be broken up into?
Uh, well, I would, I would hope it's one payment. I mean, I'm only going to submit one drawdown request, so I hope that they would fund, you know, again, what we request and/or any ineligible's or any changes, the extra percentage they held back over the previous reimbursement requests. You know, again, that's in a perfect world.
Keep us updated anyhow.
Oh, yeah, I, like I said, I hope, I hope to do that this week. I mean, I've had a lot of other things going on internally, so let's, I'm making it a priority because it's gone on too long in my mind, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, could, would you be able to tell us how much they owe us for Wheeler right now?
Oh, I believe the number off the top of my head is around 3 million, a little more than 3.
Okay.
And again, that wouldn't impact this scenario.
Right.
That would just, you know, essentially, put money back in our bank account, close out the Wheeler fund, do we need to bond, yes or no? Do we need to do anything? Are we good, you know, it would answer other questions we have, but again, it's outside of this scenario entirely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Rob?
Just, Madam Chair, I don't have a question for Rob, I don't think. I think I have a question, maybe for a town clerk and a town manager. At our last meeting, we got this scenario as far as bonding dates, or not, referendum dates.
Timeline.
Like a timeline for a referendum. And I had someone approach me this weekend saying that, they were told that the town was following this guideline or timeline as far as a referendum's concerned. And I just want to be clear that there's been no endorsement formally by the board as far as, has anyone formally endorsed this plan to move forward? Because they were, I, I was confused, they were confused when I told them that there has been no formal endorsement of this plan, it's just, I believe the town clerk gave it to us to give us just a sense of what it would, how long it would take if we ever moved forward with a referendum.
Right, discussion purposes only, and, and as a guideline, to throw that out.
Correct. You know, I believe it says proposed right on it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All set with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Rob or the town manager, anybody else here? It is, it does get complicated, and I do appreciate you coming to help us with this, because some of these things can get a little convoluted, and when we talk about debt service, we, you know, debt management fund is one thing, we have another fund, you know, for other things, and we need to make sure we keep them separated and that we're not confusing them, you know, we just don't want to, our fund balance is one set of money, but the debt management fund is another set of money, and they're not used for the same purposes and they are not the same things, and I think sometimes that gets a little bit muddled.
Yes, I mean, every, every fund has a fund balance. But the reason the general fund is called general fund is that it covers everything that is not specific, i.e. debt management. So debt management fund is specific, fund balance is specific to debt management, general fund is general to everything else, essentially. But again, we've been using the debt management fund, fund balance to help mitigate and lower general fund costs with, you know, through CIP.
And also, just again, not to, not to put too fine a point on it, if we put back into our annual budget, the 4.3, 4.43 million dollars that goes back in, that goes to our debt service fund.
That, that would be a budgeted line item in the general fund budget.
In the general fund.
That the surplus, if any, for the fiscal year, would go back to the debt management fund, fund balance, yes.
And that would help mitigate any spikes when we go out to borrow for large projects.
Correct.
But it does not mean that there may not be a change in the rest of our budgeting process, because I, I don't want people to misunderstand what's happening here. We could have a tax increase that has nothing to do with this, it's completely separate from this fund, right?
That is correct. I mean, that's why I tried to be specific in saying that, to the taxpayer, increasing the debt management fund, the debt management budget back to 4.4 will be a very minimal impact at, again, 500,000 based on revenue sources we've received today, like I said, it's going to basically zero itself out, there will be no impact to the taxpayer with regards to debt service.
Right, debt service.
Only.
Only, nothing else.
Again, assuming we do not use debt service to offset other potential increases.
Okay. Thank you for that. If anybody doesn't have any other comments or questions, you're all set over here?
Yep.
Okay, down at this side, everybody's good, okay? I want to thank you again for coming tonight and for providing this information. Michael, thank you again for arranging us to be together, those that came, appreciate